Good evening. Welcome to the November 13th Board of, Kittleville Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we enter a moment of silence, we're just two days away from, well, previously, two days ago was Veterans Day. Hopefully, you all had an opportunity to recognize the tremendous service the veterans of our country have provided. And so with that, I would like for you to just continue to consider and the veterans and their service as we enter into our moment of silence, please. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda this evening is Agenda Approval.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We have two public hearings on our agenda this evening. The first is for the local historic designation at 2400 North Virginia Dare Trail. It's the White Cottage. There's a sign-up form specifically for this public hearing. We did not have anyone sign up. But is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak specifically regarding this public hearing on designation of the White Cottage as a historic designation in KDH? Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Okay, we'll close this public hearing and open this up for board discussion. You all had it in your packet that the Historic Landmarks Commission voted June 11th to make this designation, and then we set this public hearing at our last meeting. Any questions or discussion from the board? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the designation of 2400 North Virginia Dare Trail, the White Cottage, as a local historic, with a local historic designation.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The second public hearing this evening is on proposed amendment to Chapter 153 zoning. This is to remove Sections 153.315 through 153.334 and add new Sections 153.320 through 153.325. This is to update regulations for the Board of Adjustment to comply with legislation recently adopted by the North Carolina General Assembly. We also had a sign-up sheet for this public hearing. No one signed up to speak during this public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this public, or during this public hearing? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. You all may remember that the Chairman of our Local Board of Adjustment, Richard Baer, came to our last meeting and spoke in support of this proposed amendment. And this is really, he was sharing from his perspective, and goodness, I think Richard's been on the Plan, or the Board of Adjustment, maybe close to 20 years, but from his perspective, these were really good changes at the state level, and fully supported those changes at the local level. And this really is just, again, our adopting this ordinance would be to be consistent with the legislation that was adopted by the North Carolina General Assembly. Any discussion or questions about this? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed amendment to Chapter 153 zoning to remove Sections 153.315 through 153.334 and add new Sections 153.320 through 153.325 to update regulations for the Board of Adjustments to comply with legislation recently adopted by the North Carolina General Assembly. The Board finds that this proposed amendment to Chapter 153 zoning to remove the sections I just mentioned, to update the regulations for the Board of Adjustments to comply with legislation recently adopted by the General Assembly, and is consistent with all the comprehensive plans or other officially adopted plans of Kittleville Hills that are applicable, and that the amendment is reasonable and in public interest because it updates town regulations and brings them into compliance with state regulations.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the time set aside, the first time set aside this evening for public comment. This is a time where citizens can bring any item that they wish to discuss to the board. We ask if you are speaking on behalf of an individual or as an individual, that you limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you would please try to keep your comments to five minutes. We had a sign-up sheet for this public comment time. We had one person sign up. And welcome, Michael Midgett.
Right, thanks. Last time, you guys mentioned fireworks, possibly doing a fireworks show, but as much as I like fireworks, I don't think I could support this. I mean, fireworks are illegal at the moment, and I don't think we should make an exception for somebody just because it's a holiday. Twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money, and I would rather spend that money on sidewalks. And also, we don't want to forget the possibility of an accident, of a fire, or, you know, is there any debris left over from fireworks floating around in the ocean? Those are just some other things that, you know, to take into consideration. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak during this public comment time? Anyone else? Okay, we will close public comments. Next on the agenda is response to public comment. And, Michael, if you don't mind, since this is later under, I know we have this in our packet to discuss this evening under Town Manager's Agenda. So if you don't mind, we'll just hold the discussion till then. So, but thank you for your comments. Okay, now we'll move, actually, right on into New Business. The first item under New Business is the Street Drainage and Waterline Improvement Recommendations for 2014-2015. And who would like to provide an introduction for us?
I'll be happy to, but also here with us this evening is our Engineer Pete Burkheimer, our Public Services Director Steve Albright, and Assistant Public Services Director Tony Patrick. So we've got a lot of folks that can address this, but I'll be very briefly, we'll go through this. This is the recommendation for the 2014-15 street improvements. This includes the northern area of Kitty Hill Offshore Subdivision. Also, we were recommending Option A, which is Memorial Boulevard from Baum Street, halfway to Corrigan Street, and Wrightsville Avenue from 8th Avenue north to its dead end as additional work for the project. What we would ask this evening is for the bullets that are in my memo for the board to approve, and if you do have any specific questions, as I stated, either of these three gentlemen would be happy to address them.
Thank you. Okay. Open the floor for discussion, questions, comments.
I think this is a well-thought-out and good plan. It's expensive, of course, but I think it gets us back on track and back into the position where we ought to be in terms of our yearly efforts to keep up the streets and the fixed infrastructure of the town. I support it.
I agree with Bill on his support.
Yeah, I'd like to just mention real briefly, of course, Pete and Steve and Tony, the work that they've done on this. And I don't know how much of this is known by the public or if they looked at any of the information, but due to the fact that the state was slow to release some money for funding for some projects, so the contractors were kind of hungry for work, so we were able to get this about 15% less than it was anticipated we should pay. So we're very fortunate in that regard. And we're gonna, it's a big project, and it is a lot, like Bill said, it is a lot of money, but we need to get back on that track that we were on before. And we'll get back there gradually, and this is a step in the right direction.
And I would like to commend Pete and staff for the work that you all have done on this. For those of you in the audience, if you haven't been able to pull up the full packet and see just the tracking of what we've done over the past number of years and how we've made improvements, it's significant work and very detailed.
There it is.
Yeah, it's up there now. It really gives you a broad scope of the work that's been done and how detailed it is, and how much detail goes into planning for this. And, I mean, this is a really important aspect of town government, of what we have to do in maintaining our local streets. And to, I guess, this one where we're looking at the page three of three at the beginning, where it talks about how many streets we have remaining that are in the poor condition, I think is, it's just significant to see how much progress has been made. And then, of course, adopting this new project will substantially improve that as well. So I thank you so much for the detail that you put into this. It certainly makes it easy when you're trying to justify such an expense to have the background support that justifies why we're doing this and how much of a difference it makes in our town. So, thank you. Pete, did you have anything you wanted to share?
You know I'm not bashful that way, Madam Mayor. I'll try to do it in about 92 seconds. This is a triple-threat project. It's gonna do three major areas of work. It will get rid of another hunk of our old asbestos water lines, which aren't dangerous, but they're wearing out. Asbestos is a soft pipe when it gets 50 years of age on it. We're gonna take another hunk of poor streets and upgrade it to excellent, and that's always worthy, as you alluded. Most exciting aspect to this, though, is we're going to continue our program of creating a strong backbone northbound drainage system in the Memorial Ditch. You think that's a big ditch, it can carry a lot of water, but there are 24-inch diameter, rusted-out, lousy, corrugated steel pipes in that block of Memorial. And we're having one or two fail every year. When we replace it with 48-inch pipe, the capacity will go up approximately 10 times. We will be able to move water out of flooding in the southern part of Kittleville Hills in the Memorial Corridor. And you veterans know, I mean, long-timers know, just how bad that can be and how long duration that can be. We're gonna be able to turn their misery factor from days into hours with this project and the others that come on its heel. So it's a big step in that effort. It's not the total solution, but people will notice a difference after this is done. Thank you for the trust you've placed in the staff and me.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if you take a look at the remaining work to be done, that takes exactly four years to get that done, that's a worthy commitment.
Which I'm guessing we'll be discussing more on Friday. You're setting us up. Friday morning is the Capital Improvement Plan Workshop, and we'll be looking at all of the items that we have before us as a town and trying to prioritize those. So, point well taken, Commissioner Pitt.
I've lived in this town for 20 years, and I've been working on and off with many friends at trying to get to this point. And I think it would be neat if you did it before I'm gone.
Point well taken.
Don't go, Bill.
Okay, well, with that, would you like to make a motion, Commissioner Pitt?
I move that we approve the Street Drainage Waterline Improvement Recommendations for 2014-2015 as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you again for all the work you guys did. Thank you, Pete. Okay, next item under New Business, item number two, is nominations for appointment to the Dare County Tourism Board. I know Mayor Proton Hogan has been handling nominations for most of our committees. Would you like to take this?
Yeah, right. The county requires that you submit three names. I don't know that there's ever been a case where they didn't pick the first one, but we're required to nominate three people. And our mayor has graciously served on this for the past, was it a year or two years?
Oh, goodness.
Two years.
Not even, no. I was appointed after Commissioner Woodard left and went to Dare County. So not quite a year, almost a year.
So if it pleases the board, I'd like to nominate, number one would be the mayor, and number two would be Randy Rubottom, and number three would be me, of course. And that's what I recommend. I would like to see if we can get a motion in that regard.
I shall move.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I'll just comment. I appreciate the opportunity to serve on that board, and I think having the continuity, I also serve on two of the subcommittees. One is the Grants Committee, the other's Personnel. Fortunately, we haven't had to have a Personnel-related meeting, but I think it's good to have the continuity, so I appreciate that. With that, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item number three under New Business, our requested amendments to our Kittleville Hills official traffic map. There are three different requested amendments. All three of these were heard by the Street, let me put that agenda, Street Improvement Committee. And Greg, I would like, do you mind providing an introduction on that item for us, for these three requested amendments?
No, not at all, Mayor. As you said, the Street Improvement Special Project Subcommittee reviewed these requests and kind of looked at that with each individual request. There was two to add stop signs and one to actually remove two of the stop signs, but looked at it with what is currently there, with our improvements to Bay Drive and some changes, and of course, the addition of the multi-use trail and some crosswalks. And essentially, what they recommended after reading the Town Engineers' Report and the other staff reports was to not take action and approve any of these requests, basically leave it as it is. One of the requests was to put a crosswalk at the corner of, I think it was Avalon and Bay Drive where the, or it's a sports.
Hayman.
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 They recommended that, and we do recommend that that be done. And then, the other requests were not recommended for approval. And then you have a late-arriving letter, I think that came to you today, probably at your desk, to Mr. Hazellet with another appeal to remove the stop signs.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
I'll start. Mr. Hazellet, too bad he didn't submit this a couple of weeks ago. He really hit the nail on the head. Technically, we do conform to the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. I guess by default, is that right? The state statute says you may either adopt your own or you conform. And actually, if you devise your own, it's supposed to generally conform to the state, which is actually an adaptation of the Federal Highway Authority's National Manual. The only problem with it is, is that while you use that manual, you can very quickly determine what the criteria are for traffic signals and that sort of thing. It's very easy to figure out what to do when traffic loads are 400, 500 vehicles per hour. When you get into a village-type atmosphere like we are, where we're talking about 30, 40, 50 units per hour, not just vehicles, but cars, bicycles, and pedestrians, it's very, very difficult to apply. So for years, what we have basically done is traffic calming, where whenever a distinguished citizen applies for a stop sign, if we like him or her well enough, we grant it. In fact, I have two on my little street, and approximately eight vehicles per day, we have a stop sign and a yield sign. And if two cars happen to come, two of them at the same time, the law requires that both drivers get out, call the tow company, neither car can move, according to the law, because the guy in the yield sign must wait until the stop sign, the guy at the stop sign goes, and the guy at the stop sign has to wait until the guy, you know, it's one of those kinds of situations. But we have those all over town. It's time to stop. We're large enough now, you know. I think that my stop sign belonged to Bill Stover. Very nice guy, been dead for 10 years. His widow's still alive, but she just sold the house, so I think probably it'd be safe to remove that one. But this goes on everywhere, and I guess if you really read the spirit of the manual, it basically, it says, you shouldn't even consider this unless you've got 80 units per hour, which is 80 vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles actually entering an intersection, then you should consider that as a, what they call a volume warrant for consideration of a three-way stop. But ordinarily, I don't think we have hardly any intersections. There's line of sight, there's speed, and the speed is not just over 25 miles an hour. It's the percentage of vehicles more than five miles an hour over the speed limit. There's a whole list of criteria, but I would suggest that we have to just stop it and comply with the manual, or we adopt our own policy, make it very simple, very straightforward, so that a citizen can apply it without having to go through that manual, because I can't get through it. Where's the, how about the police department? Anybody in the police department get through it? You know, at the pedestrian level, I bet you I don't get a positive answer on that. Signals, yes, right? We can figure out stoplights using that manual, that's simple. But there are, you know, it's line of sight, it's waiting times of vehicles in the intersections waiting to get in to turn. There's all kinds of criteria, there's about six different warrant criteria. I think we could simplify that and make it possible. I think two men could do it, Mr. Hazellet and whoever the chief of police designates, I think, could do it in an afternoon. And there are several examples, several towns in the state have done this. They also require their citizens to pay for it. I don't think we should try that. But at any rate, I would suggest that we either stop doing it entirely and just deny all of this, or approve the removals, deny the installations, or we form up a policy that makes sense and then conform to it. And once you have a policy, it's not necessary for the Board of Commissioners to do anything other than the annual review of the traffic map and, you know, we don't need to, it becomes an administrative matter because there's a policy that everybody can understand and follow. That's my suggestion. I'm ready to either table these or deny the new ones and approve the old, remove the old ones.
Okay. Thank you.
I see completely where you're coming from, and I cannot see going forward and doing what you say has been done in the past, and approving this one and not approving this one, and based on whatever. That's just, A, not right, and B, incomprehensible, as far as I'm concerned. On the other hand, I do see where Pete's coming from, and where the staff's coming from, and where the committee's coming from, when they already got something here, and people are used to a traffic pattern. When you take it away, people who have been driving this over and over and over, and they're doing it by road, if you take it away, it changes things. And so I can see leaving it like it is. That's where, that's why I think this was recommended, at least that's my interpretation. So I can definitely see that happening. That's my thought process, and that's where I'm inclined to lean, is to kind of leave things like they are, not make current changes. I definitely can't see making, you know, adding any more, for goodness sakes. But I see, I could definitely go with what's here and conform to this, but I can see where you're coming from, too. If somebody's looking at this and going, where did you get this? It's hard to go, what rules are you going by? So where we go from there, do we grandfather everything that's already there in, and then go with the rules from there? Or what do we do with that? That's something else to consider.
Yeah, the recommendation of the Streets Committee was to not make any changes. And the main reason for that is, and it doesn't have much to do with the manual or anything, it's just because we've had these, so many of these requests. I mean, hypothetically, someone who wants a stop sign removed on Street X, we remove it, and the next meeting, we have somebody who wants one put there. And if we honor this guy's request, we should honor this guy's request. And so we just decided at that, at the last Streets Committee meeting, and based on a recommendation by the engineer, that we're just gonna, we're not gonna change anything right now. I'm not saying it'll never change, but the recommendation was that just don't change anything, just to deny all requests for the time being. And Bill's solution might very well be a good one, and that would be something that we can deal with in the future. I wouldn't be in favor of making any moves to grant any of these requests right now, but we could either deny them or table it, or whatever we want to do, until we figure out where we're gonna go with this, so that when somebody comes and says they want something taken down or put up, we can say, it says right here in our code that that's not right, and we're not gonna change it. And if we get the code right, we don't have to honor any of these requests, because it'll be right. Once we get it figured out, we go out there and put them up or take them down, and that's the way it's gonna be.
Mayor, and Mr. Pitt, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I recall the evolution of the ever-increasing stop sign, and it's been with us for quite some time, is that what you mentioned to begin with was primarily, if not all, before we adopted the MUTCD. And now that we have the MUTCD as adopted, is what we're gonna follow, we suggest that you don't allow any of the new ones, but you leave the ones alone that were done prior to our adoption of that document. And that's, just to clarify, you know, if somebody were to come in, you know, and asked us, and you could direct the staff, you could direct Debbie to say, well, look, if it doesn't comply with the MUTCD, it doesn't need to come to the board, you know, if that's your desire. So, of course, they could all, you know, anybody could always come and speak during public comment, but I mean, as far as being an agenda item like this one is. So that's a little different in the fact that these were, in fact, done before we had a policy.
And, but see, that's where I was confused, because it states in here that the stop signs were installed by the Board of Commissioners Directive in 2008. But then also, as you, in 2008, the Board of Commissioners recommended that, so was it?
They, that particular board did not want to deal with the stop sign issues anymore, so they adopted the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
Right after they approved putting?
Right after they took the ones up. Put them up and took them down.
Because the ones that were approved right before they adopted this would not have been consistent with the language.
That's correct.
According to the MUTCD, Section 2B.
Yep.
So technically, they could be grandfathered in. They weren't done after that, they were done prior to.
It's just a good distinction to understand.
Right, okay.
That's a good point. So is it, is it, what you're saying is possibly, or suggesting, or just pointing something out, that the way it is right now was the way before the Muti was adopted, and since then, we're not gonna make any changes because we're following that?
Well, what you're essentially doing, as I understand it, is adopting Mayor Bloomberg's, you know, bring your data. you know, bring your data. Bring your data. You want to change, bring your data. You know, for the one example, the one at Hayman, might very well be supported in the summertime, because you might have more than eighty units per hour at that particular intersection, especially once we get the, what is it, five parking spaces, six parking spaces we're installing there?
Yeah, with the pier there, you mean?
Right, you might actually have eighty automobiles, pedestrians, and bicycles entering that intersection on an hourly basis for a few hours. Hard to say. Bring your data.
So we're invoking the Bloomberg rule, I understand what you're saying. No, I do, no, I really do, because that's his, that was his philosophy. Yeah, if you want something, you, you bring something up, you come and show us why you want it done, and you prove it by data, so.
Pete, would you like to provide any comment on this issue?
If the question is, would I like to?
Okay, let's clarify.
Would you share your comments with this briefly?
Okay, that's a better way to ask it. I'll try to be brief. Several things. If, if somebody made me king, and I could make any decision at all, what I would advise you to do is not to change anything right now. I'm sixty-five, I hope to, before I'm seventy, see the remaining golden spike, connect the dots part of the multi-use trail or path built from where we just left off with the recent project down to the First Canal intersection. Then and only then will we really understand fully exactly how the public will use that whole system, what it'll draw out of the neighborhood now that it goes for almost four miles. And as Commissioner Pitt mentioned, when we, when we have the parking in at Hayman, whatever form that ends up taking, that will have its own effect on summertime use of a crosswalk that would be put in in conjunction with that. Right now, we've got a pretty good idea of what's going on there, but we don't know exactly. The MUTCD, it's, it's not a law that where, if you're grandfathered, you get to stay. I mean, you guys own those stop signs, you can put them up and take them down at will. I don't think it's good public policy to be changeable-minded on that, unless there's a definite reason, that just doesn't seem like good practice to me. The inline stop signs on Bay as a traffic calming device, I've been uncharacteristically wishy-washy in my responses to that, because the MUTCD is the official book, and it just simply says, you normally don't want to be using a stop sign as a traffic calming device, but they have several redeeming values. They're cheap compared to other traffic calming devices, and they're a thing that the motorist knows what to do when he or she gets to, you stop. And so they kind of work. They have their negatives, you get some noise, you get some environmental effects, instead of being able to tool along at a nice stately twenty, twenty-five miles an hour, you got to stop, waste some energy, and then expend some to speed back up again. There's some noise, it's a little bit noisier for the adjoining neighbors, but it does kind of work. And a Board of Commissioners of a bygone day decided to put them there, and to snatch them out, and then maybe somebody decides to put them back lately, doesn't seem like a good plan to me. My thought would be, they're there, go with them until you've got that whole infrastructure system in place, and see what the patterns of bicycle and pedestrian and vehicular use are, see what the speeds are, kind of monitor the speeding, and maybe they can go away someday. Or maybe, when we get through with all our poor streets, we could afford a fancier traffic calming device here and there, and help keep the speed down that way. It seemed to me that speeding on Bay Drive was the big driver back in '08, and I get that, that's, that's, that's bad for a lot of reasons, I won't expound upon them. As it relates to the crossroads, it is state law that you stop for a pedestrian in a clearly marked crosswalk, and we, we've got several crosswalks on that whole system, and I don't know that there's a problem in people failing to stop for pedestrians who are crossing, so we can monitor that. But the key word that Commissioner Pitt mentioned was data. Right now, we don't, we haven't done a formal warrant analysis for multi-way stop signs at the T-intersections. There's no way you'll ever, and all the data in the world isn't going to justify those inline stop signs. That's just a subjective decision that was made, I understand it, and I've sort of acquiesced to it, because that's as far as I can go, since it's, it's in one of our bibles, that, you know, you normally wouldn't do that, but I get it, and I don't particularly object to it. So again, my thought would be, as I advise SISPC, hold with what you've got right now, don't be snatching them out, I don't know that that accomplishes a whole lot, let's wait and see how the public begins to use the whole Bay Drive system when it's all done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go with the chief engineer.
So you're the king.
Well, and we're, basically by doing that, we're, we're also reconfirming, as this seated board, that we're adhering to the MUTCD. We're just not reversing anything that was done prior to the Board of Commissioners adopting that as...
That's right.
...the guide for determining the correct application of traffic signs. Okay. Now, as part of this, though, if we're making, we can do this, wrapping all three of these up into one motion, or we can do, take action separately on each, there, there is the inclusion of the crosswalk.
You could, Mayor, you could simply do a motion that accepts the Street Improvement Special Projects recommendations, and that would do the crosswalk and...
And that includes the crosswalk.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If that's the pleasure of the board, would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the Special Committee of the Streets Committee.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thanks again, Pete, appreciate it a lot.
One comment.
Yes.
Our crosswalks in town, our painted crosswalks in town, and this Chief Engineer, maybe you could help me on this one.
I just thought you were done.
Mounted bicyclists seem to think that they have the right of way if they're in that, that painted crosswalk. They're ignoring the stop signs on the multi-use path, and as long as they're in that crosswalk, they'll go right in front of you, and not stop.
Sir, I hadn't heard a question yet.
Mounted bicyclists are using the crosswalks as, quote, "I have right of way" over vehicular traffic.
Let's take for an example...
For example, at the intersection of Teakwood and First.
Yes, I was going right there, or one of the first, you know, Clipper and First.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
No, there's...
No, I know, it's clearly, it's wrong, but that's, that's happening everywhere in town, and I'm afraid there's going to be an accident with that. I, I almost had one myself.
They're only one size smaller than regular street signs, we had some earlier concerns that they're confusible.
Oh, they are, a stranger stop for them, yeah. No, they're very, they're very confusing, and, and everybody ignores them, so, you know, it's, it's just like the stop sign down on my, Bill's, Bill's stop sign, nobody's paid attention for that, for the ten years I've lived there.
I have no panacea. The only thing that quickly comes to mind might be to buy fourteen little plaques that say the word bike, and attach them just below the stop sign to...
Some towns do that, Southern Shores does that.
Yeah, I've seen them, I've seen them.
And I think Kitty Hawk does that, I'm not sure.
The only guarantee on that is that it would relieve you of probably three or four hundred dollars worth of money to buy the plaques, as far as effectiveness goes.
I don't think so.
You know, it might get some, I doubt seriously it would get all of them, but you would certainly remove any doubt that it applies to them as much as it applies to the pedestrian, maybe more so.
Yeah, I know those stop signs have to be there as part of the grant cycle, or grant requirements, but...
I certainly wouldn't counsel taking them out.
Yeah, just, just a point, I, I don't want to make a big issue of it, I just...
Yeah, I've seen the signs that are like that, and it says bike stop, right on it. Now, if you're talking about somebody riding on the road, that's different.
That's right.
They follow the same rules as a...
That's right, they do have the right of way.
An automobile, but if they're on the path with a bike, and it says bike stop, they need to stop, so, right.
Well, we have discussed, I mean, John and Mary and I discussed about the potential of putting together additional, above and beyond what the Dare County Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Committee is doing, putting together additional awareness material, and so maybe that's something that we should take note of to include in there, because possibly it's an education thing, possibly it's not, but at least we could make sure to, to make note of that as well, and whatever awareness pieces we put together.
Well, I think you're right, but I think also that a lot of that just comes from habit. Most people who ride on the multi-use path really think they're riding on the road, and they just behave the same way as if they're riding on the road. They don't think that a different rule of the road applies to them, because they're on the multi-use path. They think the same rule applies as if they were in the road, and in that case, on First Street, they would have the right of way.
I submit they're probably not running, they're running the stop signs on the road, too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if they're on the road, they have to stop for a stop sign, too.
They're probably not.
They generally do, on the road. Nope. I believe that.
I have several thoughts, but I'll leave it to you.
Public comment, okay, okay. All right, well, we will move on to new business item number four, excuse me. This is proposed amendment to Chapter Thirty-One, Boards and Committees to relocate Board of Adjustment Organizational Language. Town manager, would you like to...
Yes, ma'am, this was, this was referenced back in the public hearing, item one, and it simply, as, as you stated, it relocates the organizational language, such as the selection of the chair, the terms of office, compensation, and et cetera, to Chapter Twenty-one, Boards and Commissions, which is consistent with the other appointed groups of the town, and the staff would recommend that the board adopt it as presented.
And that's Chapter Thirty-One.
Thirty-One, yes, ma'am.
I don't have any problem with that.
Okay.
Same here, no problem.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to Chapter Thirty-One, Boards and Committees.
Can I have a second?
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The fifth item under new business is a proposal from Coastal Planning and Engineering for additional engineering related to beach nourishment. And again, Debbie, I'll call on you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Back in October, Commissioner Pitt and the Finance Director and I attended a meeting up in Kitty Hawk with representatives from Kitty Hawk, DUC, and our Coastal Planning and Engineer Group down from Wilmington. And Ken Wilson spoke to us about this particular item for the engineering relating to beach nourishment. In fact, he even had several little bags of sand for us to see, so that we could tell the difference in how all the sand looked. What they do, in this particular case, is they actually go offshore and do the sand search investigation and the borrow area designs, and you see in the packet material, the colored sheet, you know, shows that area, shows the different borrow areas, A, B, and C, and as you can tell on that sheet, obviously, the, the borrow areas are located closer to certain towns than others, and obviously, the closer the borrow area to the location that it's going to be placed, the less expensive the cost would be for relocating it there. This particular study is going to be done for all three towns, the cost is simply divided by three, and it could be that, you know, Kill Devil Hills borrow area is, is the one obviously closest to us, Kitty Hawk's could be using that one also, and then, of course, DUC's would be the one closer to them, or it, it might not necessarily be that way, it just depends on what, on what they find. And so that, that is what this, this data will provide, and it's simply the next step as we, as we continue to move forward in getting sand on our beach. And we would recommend, as the bullets outlined, to accept the proposal, as I've stated, this is in cost sharing with Kitty Hawk and DUC, approve the budget amendment, and to authorize the town manager to execute the agreement subject to the approval of the town attorney. And I'll defer to Commissioner Pitt and Finance Director if they have anything else to add from our meeting that day.
The, the quest, of course, is to get the best, in terms of the coarsest and the cleanest sand that we can, each of us wants that for our project, because the cleaner it is, the happier we are, the happier our citizens are, and the happier our tourists are, and the coarser it is, the longer it stays with us. And so what we're looking for ideally is something in the area of four-millimeter granularity, and what we're hoping to avoid is anything less than two. I, I think this is an appropriate, an appropriate approach, and I recommend that we accept it, and I'm prepared to offer the motion.
Okay. How long does it take? When will we have the results back from the search investigation, the sand search? Do we know?
It would be probably about six to eight months, would you say, Greg?
Well, it's, it's a process, and they, they have a...
Depends on weather.
The weather.
They'll go out this winter and do some of this work, and of course, it's weather-related, and then what, what they do is they, they have to collect the samples, and then they have to do an analysis, and you know, there's a, they run it through a sieve, and they, they look at the, the coarseness, and then, and they try to figure out how much is there based on the core.
Right, right.
And then they, of course, have to work with the resource agencies to try to convince the resource agencies, which will be the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, and again, CAMA for the nearshore work, that this is the right sand for the work. And so that process will probably take about a year, the whole thing said and done. We should be getting some results back within six months.
There's, there's always a certain amount of ambiguity that these tests tend to generate. It resolves ambiguity, but it also generates ambiguity, because, for example, if you take a look at the colored map, you take a look at the northernmost borough area, it's small and not, not well-defined, as you can see. So as they go doing their core samples, there, some ambiguity is going to arrive, and they're probably going to say, well, you know, we better go back, take some more data, we don't have a large enough sample.
On Exhibit C, they speak to a timeframe of ten months following the written authorization that we would actually get the preliminary data report. So I think, I think Greg's correct in saying...
Yeah, for your...
It should be to you, where it's back to us. Okay. Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Okay, I move that we accept the proposal from Coastal Planning and Engineering and the Mountain Act to exceed three hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars, which includes the cost-saving Kill Devil Hills will realize by sharing this effort with the towns of Kitty Hawk and DUC, approve the attached budget amendment, number seventeen, and authorize the town manager to execute an agreement on behalf of the town subject to approval of the town attorney.
Second.
Any further discussion? I have one question. Is each town responsible on, on attachment NB-5, each town responsible for one-third of the...
Yes.
Three hundred and thirty-six?
Yes, yes.
Thousand-dollar cost?
Each town is responsible for one-third of the total. We, we have a thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollar savings from another project that we call shared earlier.
Mm-hmm.
But each town is responsible for one-third of the total.
Which equals the, because the, the overall cost is over, just over a million dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
One point seven nine.
But the reason ours isn't the three thirty-six is because of the thirty-nine thousand-dollar credit?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to clarify. Okay, so there was a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
And I would like to point out, as I'm sure you noticed, in the budget amendment, the funding is coming from the Beach Nourishment Fund that the town had been building up over years, which Commissioner Pitt was instrumental in helping start, and I'm sure this is one more project he wants to see before...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Well, thank you for your...
This would take it out of my failure column.
Okay. Okay, moving on now on the agenda into Commissioner's agenda. Commissioner Pitt.
I know I'm supposed to have one, what is it?
Well, I think we were going to talk about beach nourishment. Yes, we had had a discussion...
Right.
About...
I'm sorry.
That's okay, have I refreshed your memory yet?
Yes, no.
Okay, oh, do you want me to keep going?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. We had a discussion...
I know the feeling, Bill.
We had a discussion that there may be still some confusion.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm, I'm back on track, thanks.
I'll turn it over to you, your agenda.
I did not work the hustings at the recent election, but several citizens and several candidates did. And from talking with them, it is very evident that there is a great deal of confusion amongst our citizens as to what the tax increases are going to be and what are the tax increase impacts going to be on them and their particular parcels of property throughout the town. Quite a few citizens who own parcels on the west side, for example, were absolutely convinced that they were going to see a doubling of their taxes. And despite the fact that candidates and some of the citizens who were working the hustings for them assured them that, no, this was not going to be the case. And so I discussed this with the mayor and suggested that we probably need to do a much better job of informing people as to what this tax increase plan actually looks like with examples somewhat similarly, similar to what the finance officer had put together when we initially discussed the whole concept of beach nourishment last year, last winter. I even went so far as to draw up a one-page example, which has to be verified, the numbers have to be checked, because just as I had a senior moment here a few minutes ago, I have senior moments when I'm preparing these pieces of paper as well now. And so the numbers need to be checked and that sort of thing, but we need to put something together that we can publish in a newspaper, put on the town website, handout on flyers, whatever it takes to get the word out, because people are unduly worried. People who live in typical $200, $250,000 houses think their taxes are going up by $1,000 when they're going up by $60 and $100. And assuming that we adopt the plan. We haven't implemented this plan, incidentally. And there will be several new commissioners on the board when the plan comes up for a vote. So I, I suggested that we do something to better inform our citizens as to what we're doing. And at the same time, we need to better inform the oceanfront property owners who actually live in the area where the taxes are going to increase, because they're not going to go up $100 and $60, they're going to go up $1,500 and $2,000 and so forth, because their taxes are effectively going to be doubled for a number of years until we get this paid for. So I'd like to suggest that we put that together, we have the staff check anything I've done, most certainly, because we need to get the numbers right and that sort of thing. And maybe get somebody who knows what they're doing in putting public things together that make it look nice and effective. I tend to be too technical and that sort of thing. Anyway, that's, that was my agenda item that I suggested that I would, I talked to, to you all about with the mayor.
And on that, I would like to share, we'll share what Bill created, the one-pager, and then share it with the, with the board and send it to staff to start looking at. And the other thing I had shared with Commissioner Pitt is possibly, you know, create a, a written document or piece that we can, can do, but then also utilize that to do additional...
On the TV show.
Record it, yeah.
Television channel.
Either do, you know, have Bill and kind of do a coffee chat about this with Bill and to explain things that we could run as a, a special spotlight segment. That way, then, it could be shared on YouTube and also put on the website. So, okay, so we'll share the information with one another and with staff and then start working on that. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Great, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Reubach?
I just want to say thank you for everything you've done. I mean, you, your expertise in this area has been invaluable. I mean, I, I can't tell you how much I've learned. I, I started out this process with one, one concept and one thought process, and you've totally flipped my thought process. I mean, I've, I've really, I'm kind of like Jack. Jack, Jack and I are on even planes there. I, I watched the light bulb come up for you, and it did, it did very similar things with me as well. And, and while I voted one way, and people may, may associate me with one thing, it, for me, it really, the, the numbers, and Beverly, you did this as well, and, and I appreciate your, you put a lot of work into that. And while I think a lot of our, our constituents and people that are out there haven't seen that, you're absolutely right. That's, that's definitely something we need to do. But you've put a lot of work into this, and, and the way you explain things and what you've done and the work you've put into it has really helped me realize what this means and, and how much it, how much it means to the community and how much it can be. So you've helped me explain it to some people and tell people, it's not going to be a doubling, it's, it's, it's going to be $100, $50, $60. And while that may be a lot to some people, still, it's not going to be what the catastrophic event that they thought it was going to be. So truly, I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you for your kind words.
Yeah, I'd like to say, you know, we, we owe Bill dead a gratitude for that and many other things.
Absolutely.
Over the years.
Would you like to take the floor for your agenda? Do you have any items this evening?
No, I'm sorry, no.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Want me to have one? I'll make something up.
I don't have anything for you.
I was gonna say, do you?
I'm not storing anything here.
No, I seriously thought you were reminding me of a senior moment. I'm thinking, what was I supposed to say?
My agenda is from here forward. Just joking.
You don't have those yet. You'll know.
Oh, no, I have moments. And we will have a great opportunity in December to continue to thank Bill. He will join us for one more meeting, but, so I'm going to save my comments about you till that meeting, Bill. But I will, we'll move on into the mayor's agenda. I have a few items this evening. First is to thank Officer Sarah McDow with our Police Department. For those of you who came out to the Guns and Hoses softball tournament on Veterans Day, just a phenomenal job that she did in organizing that. A great event. I was really blown away by the, by the participation from both our Police Department and fire, our firefighters and our volunteers. Just, really, just a tremendous event. We had a great time watching the game. Some really exceptional players that we have out there on the, on our teams. I was joking around with a couple of them, so that was Monday on Tuesday, because they were a little bit sore, I think, a few of them. And I was saying, gosh, I hope we don't have anyone trying to run from, from the police tag. They were, they were going to have to buckle down and just go after it, but they were, they were sore. But it was absolutely wonderful. And it was, for those of you who don't know, it was a charity event, helping raise money as part of the Outer Banks, help me with the...
Shop With...
Shop With a Cop, but the, the overall nonprofit is the public safety, right? Which is, which is countywide. But this was specifically something that was put on by KDH to contribute to that fund and specifically with, also supporting the Shop With a Cop program. So anyway, just great work that Sarah did in organizing it, and a special thank you to all of the, the police officers and firefighters and volunteers that came out.
That's going to be a topic for one of our Destination Dare segments.
I saw Benny out there.
Dare in January.
Oh, good.
Well, great. So those of you who did not catch it, certainly look for that in January or February, that Destination, Destination on Dare, if you're not familiar, it runs on the government channel 20, and it's, each town gets to contribute content for those Destination Dare segments. We've had some, previously, we've done them on the path and the nature back in Nagshead Woods.
Ice Cream Social.
The Ice Cream Social was one. So anyway, but I think you'll really enjoy this one then, that they did, so thank you. The, our, our next meeting is on the calendar, the next Board of Commissioners meeting for December is scheduled for December night. And due to a conflict, I have spoken with our town clerk and town manager and commissioners about possibly rescheduling that meeting. And it looks like we could move it to Wednesday, December 4th at 5:30. Do you see any...
Actually, when you mentioned that to me earlier, I didn't think about this. The previous week is Thanksgiving.
Right.
So that can make it a little difficult getting your packet information to you in a timely manner. So I, I think for that reason, if it's something on the third week, might, would work better.
Third week.
What about the week of the ninth?
That's when she's going.
Well, um...
Oh, that's just...
The ninth through 11th is an issue. We could do the 12th, it is your birthday, so I hated to try to have a meeting on your birthday.
Great cake.
I was sworn in on my...
And your wife's birthday, is it? Well, swearing, yeah, it's really...
I was sworn in on my birthday, that was pretty cool. I liked it. I don't know which was more exciting.
Come on. I know which was more, your birthday was definitely more exciting.
I got why I'm still here.
You know, the, the one thing I, I will say about that meeting on December 4th, or December, whatever date we choose, that is the night that the new commissioners will be sworn in. It's also the meeting where the Community Appearance Committee has worked to reestablish the Community Appearance Award and the Award for the Most Improved Site in the town, and they're prepared to honor the nominees and the award recipients at that meeting. Other than those big items, you know, we're not going to have public hearings, we don't have any on the radar. There may be something that... So it's likely going to be a light agenda, which is nice, because that way you can really celebrate both of those things, the, the swearing in as well as the community appearance, without getting bogged down into a lot of heavy town work.
We would, we would just, then what we would, what we would do is shoot, to have your packet to you on the 27th, but we get the packet out before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, that'll work.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. And we just keep it light, and still do it on the 4th?
If that, if that's the date that works for everyone.
If that's...
And, and the only, there's quite a bit of work in putting together all the oaths and all that paperwork. No, no problem?
It's all computerized now.
And actually, the major, the major appointments would be done at the January meeting instead of the December meeting. If you have to do any appointments to other boards.
Oh, yeah, okay. So really, it's just the swearing in, the changing of...
Yeah, that's right, because you have to point to the attorney and all that kind of stuff.
Actually, actually, all of that's been taken here a different way, yeah.
We have to make room for the stop sign requests.
Okay, so I think we're comfortable with the fourth and, and in light of that we're going to keep it a relatively light agenda. Okay. Okay, so we need a motion to make the...
I move that we reschedule the December meeting from Monday, December the 9th at 5:30 to Wednesday, December the 4th at 5:30 PM.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you. And with that, I mentioned, at that meeting, we'll be swearing in the new commissioners, and I would like to take a moment to congratulate Travis Appelman on being elected as a new Kill Devil Hills Commissioner. And for those of you who may or may not know, it was incredibly tight race between Michael Midget, who's with us this evening, and Beverly Boswell. Congratulations to both of you for a well-run, well-run campaign. It's my understanding that there is a recount that's occurring at 11:00 AM tomorrow, so we will know who the second commissioner is joining us at the December meeting. And certainly wish Michael and Beverly luck tomorrow, and I guess we'll know shortly after the 11 o'clock hour, so, thank you. Okay, that's all I have. So we'll move on to Town Manager's agenda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Do have one item, it is the fireworks for 2014. After the October 9th meeting, when the staff was authorized by the board to solicit proposals for the 4th of July event, we did receive, or we did solicit proposals to seven fireworks display companies. We only received one response, that was from Zandelli's, and I'm sure you're all familiar with Zandelli's. They had done the fireworks show for the town a number of years ago, and they continue to do Nagshead and the town of Manio. They did submit a proposal for $20,000 for the 4th of July show, and Chief Tilly has been able to obtain written confirmation from the Avalon Pier management that the pier is willing to meet the safety standards to allow Zandelli's to stage the event from the east end of the pier. And with the board's approval this evening, would ask for a motion to authorize the manager to execute an agreement, subject to the approval of the town attorney with Zandelli's, for the 4th of July fireworks, and, and an amount not to exceed $20,000, to approve the next necessary budget amendment to fund this purpose, and to seek assistance through the Dare County Visitors Bureau, as they have done in the past with the other towns, as they have continued to have the fireworks show.
And so move?
I'll second, and I have a question.
Okay, so discussion, questions?
Debbie, was there, we had discussed at one time about maybe having some kind of a discount if we pay early?
I think that is something that they, oh, I don't think, they, they have indicated that that is something that they will consider as we build our relationship back.
Well, that's fair.
No, but it kind of hurt my feelings.
Also, I, you can see it up there, but I just wanted to add that no time equipment or staff is going to be used for any of this, it's all being handled by them.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I'm done, I think.
I know during public comment, Michael brought up concerns over legality, cost, and safety. I know with respect to safety, I mean, that was one of the big things that, why Chief Tilly went and to obtain the letter from Avalon Pier to make sure that they are going to comply with all the safety standards. And those standards had been changed after the horrendous event that happened in Ocracoke a number of years ago. With respect to legality, I mean, I know personal fireworks are not legal, I mean, you can do that. Right, this is legal, but I, I don't, I wouldn't be able to honestly explain why this is legal and why it's not. I don't know if you have anything to add, Steve, on that. I, I know it is, because obviously, we wouldn't be able to do it if it weren't legal, but I, I don't know the, how to delineate the, the difference.
To be honest with you, I hadn't even thought about it.
Okay.
Well, basically, it's because we make the rules, right?
No, actually, it's, it's a licensing and, it's who has a license and who doesn't have a license, so...
Oh, that's a good point.
And, you know, as far as, as, as the cost, I'm hoping that we'll be able to defray a significant portion of that cost by funds from the Tourism Board. They have substantially supported for the, at least the past three years, Nagshead and Manio's fireworks display. The other thing that I would feel comfortable stating with a fair amount of confidence is that by having fireworks in our town, it's also going to promote a certain amount of revenue put back in our town from people, you know, staying here, using restaurants here. I mean, there's a number of our restaurants where you would be able to watch the fireworks, you know, if it's a, maybe from now that we have the outdoor recreation or outdoor activity waiting areas. So anyway, so I think that, that there's also revenue that we would be able to trickle back in as, because this is really going to enhance the July 4th experience for, for tourists. So, anyone else have any comments?
I took the opportunity to ask several people this question of all ages, and I, I got all positive responses, just simply because, and, and even with the cost incurred, just, just simply because they, they, they all traveled in the past to get to fireworks, and, and it was one of those things where all I heard was, it was, the, the traffic was horrendous to get to Manio and other locations to get there, and it would be really nice to have them here again. So I, I heard that time and time again, so I think you're correct, that we will... that we will, we will see an increase in revenue to have them back here. So I, I do think it's a positive thing.
Last year, I went to see the ones in Manio.
Yeah, me too.
I left about seven thirty, and uh, I had a very pleasant hour on the green out there. I saw the fireworks, and I got back home about one o'clock in the morning.
Oh, my goodness, wow.
The traffic was horrendous.
Yeah, I was there too. It was just, it was, that was the worst year. We'd been there a couple of years, and last year was bad.
Last year was the worst I've ever seen getting out of there.
Okay, we have a first and second, or we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, Town Manager, or I'm sorry, Town Attorney's Agenda.
I don't have anything for you tonight.
Um, Consent Agenda?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. First item on the Consent Agenda, the minutes from the October fourteenth and twenty-third meeting. Second's Budget Amendments. There's three there. Um, record grant funds to reimburse the Beach Nourishment Capital Reserve Fund, Special Services and Permitting. To approve funds for sidewalk repairs along U S one fifty-eight and to appropriate funds for additional parking spaces at West Hayman Boulevard Bay Drive. Um, number three is two beach nourishment agreements. The first is an agreement that this board had adopted back on October the fourteenth between Dare County, Kildaloo Hills for beach nourishment funding. The Dare County Board added a paragraph to the effect that the county reserves the right to reduce the funding in an amount equal to any savings below the projected cost. An approval of the Consent Agenda will record your approval of that amendment agreement and authorize its execution by the mayor. The second is proposed recommended sharing of data between Duck, Kitty Hawk, and Kildaloo Hills for cost savings. This um, as we spoke to earlier, is where that savings that you recognized um, came from. We had originally contracted with Coastal Planning and Engineering um, alone on that. Number four is resolution supporting adoption of, of the Alamooral Regional Bike Plan. Um, this was, the final version of this had been leaked to the board um, for your opportunity to review it. The plan recognizes that the Alamooral Region is an international bicycle designation where opportunities exist for citizens and visitors to safely and effectively bike for both transportation and recreation. The goal of the plan supports this vision by increasing the quality of bicycling throughout the region, improve health outcomes in the region, improve safety for all cyclists, increase bicycling trips by residents and visitors, and promote and encourage the growth of the tourism economy. Approval of the Consent Agenda will adopt um, the Alamooral Regional Bicycle Plan and help guide our municipality, as it does the region, on future bicycle transportation, development, operations, and maintenance. And staff would recommend approval of the Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? One point, and Debbie, thank you for going into detail. One note I had made for the Incon- Consent Agenda was to draw special attention to item number four, especially considering, and I didn't know Jack was gonna be here, but considering we have such um, a huge cycling advocate in our town who's been really, really involved in um, promoting awareness and site, in awareness of safety and issues related to cycling, um, was just to draw attention to this in the resolution. That's Attachment C A four, that upon our adoption of this, we would also be approving this, this resolution for the plan. Um, and that this plan is, is gonna guide our future decisions as related to um, bicycle transportation and maintenance and so on and so forth. With that, I will call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, on our agenda is the second time set aside for public comment this evening. Um, none of the same parameters apply. If you wish to speak at this public comment, if you're speaking as an individual, we request you limit your comments to three minutes. And if you're speaking on behalf of a group, we ask you to keep those comments to five minutes. Um, if you do wish to speak, when you approach the, the podium, if you'll identify yourself by name and address, please. Um, is there anyone that wishes to speak at this public comment? Yes, Jack?
Uh, Jack McCombs, uh, nine seventeen Cedar Drive. Actually have two different subjects, so I don't know if I get three minutes or six minutes.
Technically, three, but maybe we'll give you about four.
In reference to the conversation about uh, the cycling problem that Bill uh, identified, there are different classes of cyclists and bicycles. I'm, I'm gonna talk about the two that are most dominant here in the Outer Banks. One is the road biker, road bike, and the other one is a casual beach cruiser hybrid type bicycle. The road bikers are generally the people that do not go on the multi-use path. It's dangerous for them, and it's dangerous for other users of the path. There are also the safest cyclists, believe it or not. They're very conscious that they can be killed at any moment. And I speak from experience, so we tend to really pay attention to uh, the traffic around us, the traffic control devices that are available. Now, saying that, many times, road bikers will ride through stop signs. I don't wanna turn this into a personal thing with the police department sitting right here. But the fact of the matter is, the cyclists, when they come up to a stop sign, they will slow up and then pick up the pace uh, when they see, when they check left, right uh, and go through the sign. Some of the states, now my knowledge of this particular thing goes back more than a year, but some of the states recognize this as a fact. At least one state, and from the last reading I had of this, have created laws calling, calling them the rolling stop sign that was built exactly for this, this situation. As the cyclist comes up to the stop signs and they're reducing their speed generally, I mean greatly, uh, they're checked left and right, they can roll through the stop sign. Right now, in Kildaloo Hills and the other communities of the Outer Banks, most road bikers do ride through the stop signs and as a rolling stop sign. Also, on the surface streets, not to bypass, many motorists roll through those stop signs too. Now, many, the percentage of road bikers that do it as compared to motorists, it's much higher on, on the road bike side. Your real problem lays with the casual rider.
Right.
The casual riders will ride, ride right through those stop signs. And I've seen this time after time when I'm on my bike or I'm driving, and it just happened yesterday. I was gonna turn in my street as I was driving north, and I saw a man on the bicycle, on the multi-use path, going the same direction as me. He rolled through the stop sign, never turned to see if there was any traffic coming. And I stopped, because I knew what he was gonna do. He went right through the stop sign. So I was ready for that. But your real problem is, is the casual rider. And I don't have a solution to that. I don't know how you do that. The police department has a lot more, more important tasks than to worry about the casual cyclists violating the stop sign in the multi-use path. Any questions to? Okay, I'm, I'm through with that part of it. Okay. I wanna talk a little bit about the uh, a better understanding of the true tax cost to our residents of the beach nourishment. It's no use complaining about the information was already out there. And if people had taken the time to educate themselves, they would have been able to see the true value, the true cost for every resident of the town. It's no use complaining about that, because what Commissioner Pitt had talked about is true. Many of our residents probably do not understand it. And I do not believe, although you have to do it, that putting it up on Channel twenty or on YouTube is gonna solve that problem. Uh, the town used to, I haven't seen it in quite some time, put out a very attractive town newspaper that was in color and quality paper. I don't know if that's being done anymore. I don't recall getting it in the last year or so. But it was a very, it was rather big.
It was discontinued quite a few years ago, yeah.
But it was an attractive uh, town, vehicle for conveying information to residents. What I'm saying is, I think, I don't know what Commissioner Pitt's uh, approach was to educate, but uh, I think you need to put one together and get copies to all the residents. Because I don't think that YouTube or Channel twenty's gonna do it. You're still gonna have this problem. And that prob- that, that has consequences for the town. If they really don't truly understand the true cost of beach nourishment, both in terms of the tax increase and what we could avoid in the future by not doing this, then you're not gonna have the sort of support going forward that I think you really do need.
Thanks, Jack.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at public comment, at this public comment? Yes, good evening.
I'm Blake Hallpepper from First Street. And in what Jack was saying, is that a possibility that we can piggyback with Dare County tax mail out and get that message to Kildaloo Hills residents only? Is it a possibility that we can piggyback in the same envelope that gets sent to every taxpayer in this town?
Well, we also send out quarterly water bills, which would be another way of doing it.
That's a better way, Brian.
That's a good idea.
And every citizen. Well, not every, no, not necessarily. Some renters don't receive the water bills, their landlords do. Most of them don't.
The renters aren't gonna be paying the taxes, though.
That's true.
That would get quite a few people, though.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um. Some of the tax bills actually go to the mortgage companies.
That's, that's, actually, a lot of them do. You know, the, the residents never see the tax bill. That's right.
The water bills.
Usually, they see the water bills.
Yeah.
Well, that might be, and we can, we sit, we mail out the water bills ourself, don't we, Beverly? Yeah, yeah.
Do an insert.
So that might be one way of doing it. And what, and, and other than the folding and stuffing costs, I don't.
Probably easier to do an insert in our water bills than it would be in the Dare, to, to sort out the water, the Dare County.
If we can condense something, we're getting ready to do an eight thousand person mail out as required by the CRS. It hasn't been printed yet. We're actually working with the CDC. Um, they've taken one page. We have three. Oh, CRS.
Yeah, can you, do you mind either of that, just so we, whichever, yeah, sorry, Meredith, thank you.
I was, I was gonna mention to Meredith, try to um, cut through some of the acronyms so people understand what you're talking about.
Come on.
As part of our flood um, program, we do community rating system. The community rating system gives all town citizens a discount on their flood insurance depending on what activities we do to promote education on flood. The, one of the activities that we do is we send a newsletter out to all of our citizens. Past three years, we've been partnering, partnering with the Community Development Corporation. They take a page or two to discuss insurance, affordable insurance, or mortgage rates, or, or whatnot. And then we take the interior to um, protect people from, or help people protect themselves from flooding and explain to them what floods on there may, may be in, and, and where to get information and, and things like that. We're in the process of getting that um, publication together right now. I don't know how much room we have left with working with the CDC, but if it was something that was relatively small, we might be able to incorporate that into this mailing that we've already got in the works.
And it, and it does meld nicely with our community outreach efforts for flood, because obviously, beach nourishment is a flood mitigation activity, so it would fit right in.
And, and what we could, we could simplify it or, or reduce it by going back to your one page.
That's the idea of that one page, yeah.
And, and reference some other areas that they could go for additional information, such as our website, such as the YouTube.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We'll, we'll need to, to contact Chuck Poe and, and work with him. And it hasn't been printed yet.
It's, it's coming up.
We've sent them our, our PDF draft, but um, it has not gone to the printer yet. So we may have an opportunity to stop that at eight A M tomorrow morning.
Well, um, we'll take the information that Commissioner Pitt's done, have Bev run those numbers and make sure all that's good. And then we can massage that a little and have it, get it out.
And we'll put it into our PDF so that maybe that can get out as an initial push. It will, a lot of them will go in the trash, but we're sending out eight thousand. Every taxpaying citizen will be getting, which is required by our community rating system to get our points.
Great.
Good, great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Meredith.
Yeah, and um, let me regain order a little bit, because we're, we're out of order a little, but that's okay. Um, because we've kinda moved directly into response to public comment, which is fine. But um, we need to see if anyone else has anything else they wanna say at public comment, and then we can go back and wrap this up. Does anyone have any other item that they wanna share? Did you wanna speak?
Do you have any statistics on the number of households in the town that receive the automatic emails uh, on?
Sure.
I would also consider pushing it down that pipe too, to.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that would get to a lot of people.
Yeah.
And, and you probably wanna publicize the fact that, that people can automatically get that, that service if they sign up for it.
Include that in there. Okay. Does anyone else have any thing they'd like to, does anyone else wanna speak at public comment? Okay, so great suggestions on this. I mean, obviously, this is gonna continue to be important work is to get the message out. So um, Blake, thank you for your suggestion, and Jack, thank you for your comments and suggestions. Um, Meredith, great idea. And so I guess in the morning, Brian, great idea. Thank you.
And, and every commissioner and every town employee ought to have that sheet of paper in his back pocket.
Absolutely.
That's his three-minute elevator speech every time the subject comes up, as it frequently does.
Absolutely. Okay, and maybe the next um, spotlight segment, we could add something about if people, if they aren't already on our automatic distribution list, how they can sign up on that. So good thought on that as well. Some people may not realize that you can be on the distribution list and get um, updates on everything that's happening and meeting agendas and all that, so. Okay, um, anything else from the board?
I do have one response, Mr. Midgett's question about the illegality of the fireworks.
Okay.
And fireworks are illegal, but if there are companies who have licenses and if they get a permit from the State Fire Marshal's Office, and they can do that if they have this license.
And a per- and a permit from the town.
And the town permits it, then it's fine.
Okay. Okay, with that, um, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Bring somebody with you next time.
Have a good evening. Happy Thanksgiving.